Tonight, so it will be this quorum of the four of us, let the minutes show. And before we start, I'm going to ask Teri to lead us in a moment of silence.
Since we last met, one of our high school students died, and so we want to take, take a moment of silence to remember Kayden Bowe and Kayden Bowe's family as they continue to walk through this valley of the shadow of death. And we know that when one member of our community suffers, we all suffer. And also, in this time as well, to just relay how thankful we are for the crisis team in our district, who shows up and takes good care of teachers and other learners. And we really are fortunate to have them in place. But if you would join me now in a moment of silence.
Thank you, Teri. So if you would now stand, please, and we'll say the pledge. Thank you. It's fun to hear those young voices out there reciting our pledge. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have comments from the audience, which there are none tonight. Nobody signed up, so we'll move on. Then, to approve the agenda, or if there's any requests to pull anything from the consent agenda? I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I move approval of the agenda.
Motion and a second. I can do that, Stacy, you bet. So, we're ready for the vote, Stacy. That motion passes. Next item, we have to read the vision statement. Wes, could you read that for us tonight, please?
...to embrace and be prepared to realize their potential.
Thank you. And then, do we have any conflicts of interest, Dr. Schultz? And then we have, tonight, our presentation for the best award. I'll turn it over to Dr. Schultz.
Kobe, do you mind coming up here? I'm just gonna read to you for a minute, and then I'll join you. Tonight's best award goes to Kobe Leisinger. And I just wanted to read a few things about what was said about Kobe. And Kobe is a teaching assistant at Dakota Prairie Elementary. And this actually goes along with both of his roles, his other one. As a committed morning supervisor, teaching assistant, and leader of the gap program at Dakota Prairie, Kobe plays a crucial role in providing our learners with a safe, structured, and engaging start to their day. If you've ever hosted a child's birthday party, you know the energy organization and patience required to guide a group of young children. Now imagine managing 150 to 300-plus energetic and sometimes tired learners every morning, leading them through games while creating a fun yet structured environment. That's exactly what he does every day. And he does it with a remarkable sense of calm and composure. Outdoor days, Kobe ensures that our learners staying outside between 7:30 and 8:00 a.m. remain active, safe, and engaged. On indoor days, when the gym is full of eager learners, he takes the lead by organizing structured games and activities that keep everyone engaged and moving. In addition to his morning duties, he also serves as a teaching assistant, showcasing his dedication to supporting our learners, both academically and socially. He is currently enrolled in the teacher apprenticeship program, which means he's working towards his teacher certification. Yay. The roles Kobe fills are not easy and not positions many would eagerly take on, but every morning he arrives with the same calm, positive energy, ensuring our learners begin their day in the best way possible. His commitment and positive impact at Dakota Prairie make him truly deserving of this recognition.
Congratulations, Kobe. You're more than welcome to stay, but we also understand if you leave. Probably has kids out there yet.
Oh, they all came for him. Oh, can we get a picture?
That was great. That was great.
Yeah.
Can I go do it?
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have our presentation from the community awareness presentation from HOSA. And I'll let you girls get set, and when Dr. Schultz comes back, we'll get you started, okay? Thanks. You coming? Anytime we can see our students highlight things that they're doing in the school and in the community is great, so thanks for coming. Thanks for taking this opportunity and coming.
Okay. My name's Lauren Bortno.
I'm Amelia Wendell.
And we're here on behalf of VHS HOSA, which is Health Occupation Students of America. And we're here for our community awareness project. And the purpose of our project is to educate our community about health-related issues. And we recognize that childhood food insecurity is kind of a prevalent issue within our own community. So we consulted with the Brookings Food Pantry and decided to pursue this as our community awareness project. Food insecurity is defined as a lack of consistent access to enough food for a healthy life. It's a common misconception that food insecurity is just about hunger, but it also includes uncertainty of where a child's next meal can come from. So to highlight how food insecurity heavily impacts children, we compiled a list of national, state, and local data regarding food insecurity. And if you look, it shows that one in five children across America don't have enough food to eat, according to Feeding America. And if you look on their meal gap study map, you can see that every county within our state faces food insecurity. Furthermore, if you were to single out Brookings County, you'll see that it's estimated that about one in six children face food insecurity within our very own county. There are many causes of childhood food insecurity, but among the most common is economic instability. Families with a low income or experiencing unemployment struggle to afford nutritious food for their families. Another cause is lack of access. Although there are programs designed to help, not all families can access these resources. Finally, the cost of living, which includes the high prices of both housing and childcare. After looking at the causes, we also want to talk about the impacts this has on young children. So without the consistent access to nutritious food, children face harmful effects like physical health, cognitive development, and emotional health. Without nutritious food, children can experience stunted growth and developmental delays, which lead to weak immune systems. And furthermore, it impacts their cognitive development and emotional health, by impairing cognitive functions and challenging the child's ability to interact positively within their own community. Because of this, we have organized a food drive with the Brookings High School HOSA from March 4th to March 12th. We are collecting many food items, and all donations can be dropped off in the VHS front office. And after consulting with the Brookings Food County, we compiled a list of different items that they would like to see for the specific age group. And of course, all items are welcome, but these were their preferred items for this age group. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the girls?
No, just such a great project.
Worthy cause, very worthy cause.
And I love to see the career technical student organizations get so involved in our community, because I think that's really an outreach that you do so well. So just kudos to your organization.
Yes, and just so educational. I don't think people realize, like, one in six, you know? I think we think we live in a community that's... So thank you for bringing that to...
Until Wednesday, you're collecting the food items at the high school.
So we can bring them to the school. Okay. And how many are in your organization? Okay, good.
Okay, thank you, girls. Thanks for coming. And next up, we have our presentation from Madera Elementary with Mr. Grunhagen.
Well, good evening. Thanks for the introduction there. This is Binkley. Mr. Grunhagen here, principal at Madera Elementary. Just gonna give you kind of a quick overview of some things that have been happening here or at Madera throughout the year. Just a quick photo here, and I'm gonna start with just a little bit of a kind of background of Madera Elementary. I know we've just got done with a huge building project, and I want, again, to take the opportunity to say thank you to our board, both past and present, for all the work and the initiative in getting that bond passed, and then the work to build a beautiful new Madera Elementary. As you can see, the original Madera was built in 1976 and stood until 2024, last spring. And then there was an addition in '84, eight classrooms kind of on the east end. And then there was another addition in 1997, and that piece is still standing today, is renovated. And if you peek back, it's kind of close to where the glass windows there are on the right, or back behind there is where be the '97 addition remains. And then throughout the 2023 to 2024, we had the demolition and the new construction that was all coming together. Had to have a little fun there in the bottom left there. Then one of the last things that we did as we walked out, we found that no-school sign in the boiler room. And I thought, you know, after the last 48 hours of moving out, preparing, there was no better place to maybe put that sign than in front of that excavator. But that, a couple glances at the old school. We moved in this fall to beautiful new school, and I listed 2021 to 2024 as kind of like how that project came together, circling all the way back to those first bond committee meetings. I want to say they were in December of 2021, and so a long process to get where we are today. This beautiful new space, you can see on the right, another glimpse at our entrance. And then on bottom left there is our second grade group in one of their beautiful flex spaces, having a large group meeting. Added more classrooms, flex spaces, a beautiful, large, new gym. I've got a photo on the next slide for that. A bunch of breakout rooms for students and staff to use to support student learning. We added that preschool in the ECE Center, a full-service prep kitchen as opposed to just a serving space. A nice new secure entrance with that vestibule and having to buzz in and buzz out, which is, the safety is a huge upgrade from the old building. Spaces for special programs, as well as an updated playground, among many, many other things that make our new building just so wonderful. Here you can see that beautiful new gym at our first school assembly that we held the first part of September, when the floor was finally cured and we were ready to go. Foggy morning on the playground there, back in, I think, October. And then another photo there, this one of our first graders in a nice community outreach with our fire department as they were talking fire safety. So you can see just three photos there of some of those brand-new spaces. A little deeper look into who we are as a building. There's a photo of our staff, probably 15 minutes before we welcomed families into our kind of makeshift open house and back-to-school event this fall on our beautiful Bobcat Playground there. We have 17, 72 staff members in our building. Seventeen classrooms that are junior kindergarten through third, and then we do have a preschool classroom, which I did list below there. We offer our five encores, we've got six special ed case managers among the school psych and an IEP coordinator that are housed in our building. Those two support other buildings as well. Twelve TAs and BTs, both special ed as well as general ed. Early childhood special education space, administrative assistant, counselor, part-time gen ed behavior specialist, part-time nurse, our interventionist, full-time EL teacher, three occupational and physical therapy, three custodians, three child nutrition staff, and then five wonderful playground supervisors that help. Those amongst many others, staff around our district that frequent our buildings. So that number of 72 is the number of staff that come and go as well. So a number of support staff that are in and out and supporting the entire district. Little bit of fun about our staff. I believe that our staff is very invested in the work that they do, as you can see in their collaborative photo there in the bottom right. Part of our MTSS work that I'll talk a little bit more about later on. The high focus on our literacy and literacy in the classrooms, and that's what's going on in that t-shirt or that picture in the bottom. They're very hardworking, they care a lot about our students, and certainly they like to have a little bit of fun, based on the photos up and above. A little photo of Mr. Rungy and I as they were hiding the gingerbread and the elf around the building, and staff had to find those, and some students were finding them, and they were rehiding them. So a little fun activity, but they are a tremendous group of individuals that truly deeply care about the learning and the well-being, not just of their students when they're in our building, but when they leave the building as well. And a little bit about our students as a whole, we have 394 students. That was an uptick from the last couple years as we opened up that preschool and built on that early childhood special ed program as well. Our class sizes range between 19 and 24, depending on the grade level. You can see the breakdown there of how many are in each grade and each program. Of that 394, 61 of them are English second language or ELL students, and 80 of those students are on an IEP. So it's about a third of our students fall into those two categories. I also believe that our students, and we say these every morning, they are respectful, they're responsible, they're safe, they're kind, they're actively engaged. They care so much about each other, they're very energetic. One of our junior kindergartners down there with the parachute. They're friendly, and they are just so supportive. Our Read Across America Week, our partner reading there in the upper right corner, was one of the things we did, some multi-age collaborations. With some reading last week, and that event was just wonderful throughout the week to celebrate the joys of reading. Few highlights just throughout the year, kind of on that academic side. Got collaborative teams that meet weekly, both in grade levels as well as departments. Our encores are meeting, our grade levels are meeting. Our interventionists and sped departments are collaborating with our classroom teachers to help support the instruction in the classroom. Two of the big focuses, certainly our MTSS, as I mentioned earlier, multi-tiered systems of support focusing a lot on our tier-one instruction. Really noticed a lot, as I mentioned, our encore meeting with a kind of a cross-curricular approach. Our encore staff have been looking for more ways to help embed both reading and math skills into their lessons. You know, my background in PE, I've been in the gym a few times and seen Mrs. Robb with their sight words, they're running down, doing relays with those, adding coins and math into some of the locomotor movements that they're doing, doing what they can to kind of help support across the building. And as I mentioned, Read Across America Week, few, four bullet points. And we had dress-up days every week to help kind of boost the energy. We did daily drop everything in read time. We had mystery readers in the building. We even had Dr. Schultz in to read to a classroom. And then we coordinated multi-age reading opportunities so our third graders were connecting with our first graders and our second and our kindergarten. We included our preschool, our ECE, in that too. So that was just a fun opportunity to get to build those relationships, and those older kids definitely love the opportunity to read to the younger kids. Few more kind of broad highlights. We continue to utilize our dojo cart, and there's a lot of excitement around positive behavior within the building. I think our biggest one is that Lunch Buddies, where students can turn in dojo points to have lunch at a special table by the window in the sunlight with a friend. And it doesn't matter if that friend is in their classroom, a grade above, a grade below. We make that happen. Lunch with a staff member, I had a staff member today say, hey, my son asked if they could eat lunch with me. How do we make that? Because my lunch is different than theirs. And we figure that out so that they have that opportunity to celebrate the positives that they've, the points that they've earned and all the positive behavior they've shown. That dojo cart can also, hot chocolate or hot cocoa, or if the teacher wants coffee, we coordinated time to do that. We've had a bunch of apparel donated from SDSU and Brookings Athletics and Activities, as well as, you know, stickers, toys, some of those things. We had the opportunity to visit the FFA Petting Zoo a couple weeks ago, always a highlight. You know, the cold weather hampered it a little bit out with the outdoor activities, but they come back, and, you know, many of them are going, hey, Mom and Dad, they got kittens for sale, or can we get a bunny? So maybe some sales pitches going on there as well. We do monthly assemblies, as you saw on one of those first slides, where we celebrate kindness, things that we've seen. If we see somebody doing something above and beyond, we like to recognize those. We celebrate student birthdays, summer birthdays, we hit their half-birthday, do some PBIS updates, and then a lot of times we do kind of a fun game that involves the students and the staff, whether it's a relay or, you know, quick basketball types of things. You know, about a five-minute activity to get the students involved as well. Kindness Week was a few weeks back. Mrs. Schwanzer, counselor, coordinated with Chocolaté, and they drew stickers and created kindness stickers, and then they sent those to Chocolaté. And if you visited there, they were wrapped around the coffee cup as kind of a kindness act, community-wise. And then we've had two family nights throughout the year. We had a game night this last fall, just our PTA provided the meal, and we just invited families in for an hour, had games spread out all over. Just a great chance to connect with them and invite families into the building. And then probably our biggest hit here in February was our bingo night in the bottom there. We just packed the house with people for an hour of bingo and prizes and the celebration and the excitement from the kids. So those are just a few highlights from without our entire building, but it's brief, a brief overview. But we've obviously had a lot that has happened at Madera in the last, you know, six months to three years of construction, so.
Any questions for Mr. Grunhagen? I would say, what do you feel, Mr. Grunhagen, is your biggest challenge that we as a board can assist you with or help you with? Or, you know, any things like that that come up?
Yeah, put me really on the spot there, Teresa, but, you know, I just think that we've had such great support from our board, and I know literacy has been a really big promotion. I think continuing to express the importance of the early learning and early reading with our kids. Just continued support, our teachers have a lot on their plate, they work really hard. And you do a fabulous job of recognizing that, whether it's a meat and cheese tray or, you know, thank you cards, just, I think just continuing to recognize kind of how hard that they are working in the building is a great way to support our staff.
Well, that's the answer I was looking for.
Perfect. Nailed it.
Good. I wanted to say, I think it's just great that you're still doing the family engagement nights. I just think we really need to promote the idea of families' involvement with our school and reading and that kind of thing as well. And I just think the schools belong to the community, so it's an awesome opportunity to have our families come in for those events.
Built the school, invested in the full-service kitchen. Refresh my memory, you prepare food there for another school?
We prepare just solely for the Madera students.
Only for Madera, okay.
Yep, and Wes, that has been an absolute amazing addition. I mean, the flow with the double-serving line, and, I mean, it's just an incredible upgrade from a tiny little space, which was about as big as where your board table is, to serve in the past. So it's been a great addition.
I just had one, so I heard you say, like, PTA, is your PTA pretty active that they put on? That's great. We don't hear a lot. Sometimes we're like, oh, do PTAs need, you know, help?
It's a challenge, I think, in a lot of buildings. We've got a good core group and continue to invite in more families. And it's great when you get a kindergarten kiddo in and their parent jumps in, you know, because you know you're gonna have them for a few years. But they do a lot of work with that bingo night. I mean, that's a lot of businesses to reach out to and coordination and help. And our staff are wonderful at being at those events, too. I mean, we're all busy, and there's a lot going on at nights, but I bet we had probably, you know, close to 50% of our staff that were able to attend bingo night. And I think there was a, I know the Bobcats played that night, I think the Jax were playing that night, and there was hockey going on, so there's a lot of things that go on, but our staff were really committed to that event as well. Well, thank you for your time. Thanks again for all your support.
Next up, we have our communications, performance, and oversight.
The performance oversight committee, Deb and I met a couple weeks ago, and we reviewed the bills. And so we're caught up on that.
And then we have each been at one of the insurance meetings. There's been two insurance meetings. The last one was a presentation about potential changes for next year and changes in cost, of course, for our insurance policies. So that's gone back, there's teachers on our committee, that's gone back to their buildings, and they'll discuss it. But there definitely will be an increase, looks like around 8%.
And that is an action item tonight, yeah, okay. Next committee is facilities and construction, and Kelly's not here, so...
No update since last meeting, so...
And then we have policy and governance committee. We have four items on tonight, a couple notifications and a couple first readings. And so if you could please read through the first reading so we can make any changes that need to be done before we have the second reading. Then we have school finance.
Other than Dr. Schultz, then keeping the full board appraised of what's going on in Pier, and no news sometimes is good news relative to major changes in state policy relative to finance. And there is one bill out there relative, that probably wouldn't affect Brookings to the great extent since we've already had a cap-outly bond issue and a certificate issue and our major bond issue four years ago. So those are scheduled to change and point certain dates that only those... Other than that, just watching legislature in general has been something that the full board has been involved in.
And we'll probably meet as our committee after we know the final docket in Pier is over and we know what we have to work with for... Okay. Thank you, Wes. Have any reports from our ad hoc committees? And any general board communications?
Well, the all-band concert, that is huge. I think we need to find a bigger venue. That's so well-attended, that lots, lots of folks standing. So, wow, amazing, fifth grade all the way through seniors, it's great.
Because they know how crowded it's gonna be, like, I don't know, because I know parents, grandparents, yeah, you just...
Yeah. I guess on the same note with band, Mr. McMahon was, had a nice award, and how nice to bring that to our district, so along with the band, yeah. Deb, do you have anything else, Teri?
Well, I mean, I don't know if this is right, but reading through all the reports, I just put a shout-out to Hillfest is back.
Oh, right.
How many years have we gone without Hillfest, so, yay.
Always the funny bit. No, just in reading through the reports, too, I apologize, I didn't wear yellow tonight. I looked in my closet, I have nothing that's yellow, other than some gold Jackrabbits sweatshirts, and I didn't think they were appropriate. But I know this is celebrating Diversity and Disability Week, and so I'm just excited to see all the things going on in the school. Mr. Grunhagen was talking about the dress-up days. It's a real great way to celebrate all of our students and make them feel included.
I guess I have several call-outs or shout-outs. First of all, congratulations to all of our teachers and staff who were awardees of best-of-the-year kind of things. Congratulations to them. Congratulations on hosting the state debate tournament, and I think the school was in one piece yet today, so, or yesterday when they came back, so that was great. The Nationals, Science Bowl is going to the Nationals, which is quite outstanding. And then the bowling team also has done really well. And thank you to the FFA for getting through their FFA week and their animals and everything they had to do with the coldest weather we'd had. and everything they had to do with the, with the coldest weather we'd had. So just a lot of shout-outs, a lot of good things happening. Um, some, some days I can feel a little bit like I don't know what's gonna happen next in the world, but, uh, reading all of these, reading all of these reports, I just felt a great hope and, um, some joy in the world. So, uh, thanks to everyone for putting your reports in. Okay. We'll move on. Uh, Dr. Schultz, we'll have your superintendent's report.
Right. And a couple of things, just from some of the admin reports too, um, I too did not wear yellow. I, uh, did not do it intentionally, I, I just didn't remember to wear yellow, um, and it would've been slim pickings. But yes, this week, um, this week is disability awareness week and so each day we do highlight a, a different disability, um, and that, so that we can just become more, it's a, it's a natural, normal conversation, um, and it just allows us to have those conversations. And tomorrow, um, there are a variety of D words, um, dyslexia being one of the three, um, that, that awareness piece. And so, um, I think tomorrow is blue, so I will, I will try to do, I will try to do better tomorrow. Um, we did have kindergarten screening, um, the numbers are still so early that, um, you know, it's, it's hard to, to know what those numbers mean for enrollment. There was 203, um, students screened, which is down 20 from last year, but keep in mind we, we always have makeup days, that sort of thing. So, um, we'll, um, make sure we get you updated numbers when that happens. Um, I'm not sure if you, if you, uh, saw with the, um, middle school report, but Mr. Foster reported on the civics be, and that's a pretty cool, um, collaboration with our, uh, Brookings area Chamber of Commerce. They, they sponsored and when they brought it to, um, kind of brought up the idea, it was like, yes, absolutely, we are very interested. Um, and so it started with, I think, around, um, forty, forty, forty-three students, I believe, wrote an essay if they were interested in competing on our team. And from there, then it was narrowed down to 20 that will compete live, um, at six o'clock on March 27th. And so the five winners from that, um, event, then will go on and represent us at a state competition with the opportunity to win and move forward, um, at, at a national level. So, we're just so thankful for the Chamber of Commerce bringing that to our students. The EL, uh, we had, it's, there's pieces of March and then also it's time to be reevaluating, evaluating our English learners', uh, program and just, we've talked about this before at our meetings, but right now in the Brookings School District, there's 244 learners who are identified as English language learners, meaning English is not their, um, first home language and they also meet other criterias. There's 29 languages spoken between the six schools. I'll go pretty quickly through mine. The first piece of, of the superintendent report are those bills. We know that with the, um, the pipeline legislation, 1052 being signed, that has, has allowed now that we, the session is really to the point of budget. Budget's never approved till the end and, um, this year, property tax bills. And I, I provided three of the property tax bills. Um, I have to say, I'm not sure of where, if anything, these changed today, um, so I would update those. Um, the Senate Bill 216 is the governor's bill, um, and that had an amendment put to it, I do believe. So again, once I, when I start these reports, um, a day like today in session, things change. And so those are the three to keep an eye on. Um, if you look at Senate Bill 191 and, um, that's been amended, I believe, three times. And the thing that we, again, it's not my place to tell people how to, to feel about, about certain bills, but the thing that make, the part of that one that makes me nervous is that, um, property tax assessment would be based on the sale amount, not on the assessed amount. So if I sell you something or I sell my family member, I, I can say it's for a dollar, you know, um, and so the, the amount of property is sold would be what it's assessed on. And so people will find ways around that and it will hurt anyone, not just schools that depend on property tax assessments. So, I'm hopeful that Senate Bill 191, um, would, would maybe go away, but again, it's not my place to tell you what to think, but I do see how that could cause problems. 1235 establishes that cap on annual property tax increase. I do believe it was amended to potentially exclude different areas, different levy areas for school districts, um, but I'm not sure where that ended today, if it, if it did. And so those are the three to keep an eye on, um, but my summary could be up, out of date because it was from this weekend. The second page, I did just provide a different, additional bills that do have, um, some correlation to, to schools. Um, there's a vehicle bills, obviously always like provide opportunities, you know, those are usually words, so we wanna keep an eye on those. House Bill 1239, um, which was, um, it revised certain affirmative defenses for the dissemin- dissemination of material harmful to minors and obscenity, um, offenses. This was what has been labeled the library law, um, or bill. And today I do believe it passed out, uh, off the floor with an amendment that comes back somewhat to the school board, not the, um, not the librarian. And so I'm, again, that one, I'm just gonna, I just think it's something to pay attention to and we just need to know where that bill lands, more so than having an opinion. Um, so those, those others are ones to, to keep an eye on. As far as a great place to learn, in January I had shared with you that, um, a connection of mine is Terry Thorin, who is, um, the maker of, um, The Rugrats and Wild Thornbergs and he, um, we were able to bring in, or just an amazing program, um, and, and I could pick where I wanted it to go and so Matt Sass and Kerry Crookman have started that program with their students and this picture that I, I shared, um, that was in, in one of the last stages that the kids have worked on before. All of their writings now were sent to Terry and his team and they're creating the, the animations. Our students do the writing, they do the developing, um, they pick out their animation characters, that sort of thing. And, um, I, I was able to spend some time, not a lot unfortunately, with Terry last weekend in, um, New Orleans. And a couple of things I wanna share. One is I provided you with, um, how this particular program influ-, how schools are tying it into, it was really created to help, um, that connection for kids finding purpose and not just purpose, but all of those areas. We know especially middle school, high school, sometimes kids just need another reason, something fun. And this program is based around those nine science-based elements of connection to your classmates in your school district and that support piece that create ultimate happiness amongst kids, adults, whoever's doing it. And so I just wanted to show you, this wasn't just me finding a program to implement that sounded cool. Um, I'm really, think it's really important. The other cool thing, and I haven't been able to talk with them, but Terry and I visited about, um, we have a high school leadership group that, um, they started this year and one of the things I know Justin and Zach have said, we don't know what all to have them do, they're like future leaders and, and it's just a group. And I went and talked to them once, but, um, Terry, he, he has even worked on, um, mental health, social emotional animation programs for children in Ukraine. He's, he's, he's really big and so it's really cool when he says, Summer, uh, we were talking about my, our high school and how I could connect them and he is now having a new animation series coming out, but he likes to throw it past students, high school students or middle school, whatever. And so he would like to work with our high school leadership team and have them kind of vet out the program, give him suggestions and then maybe we could also pilot the program, would be my hope. So, that was something really cool that came out of me visiting with him. A great place to collaborate. You can see in the pictures, um, uh, professor, I only called her Nellie, she is, or Ellie, and I don't wanna mess her name up, but she's an assistant professor of interior design at SDSU. She asked if we, I could work with her interior design kits. And so this was juniors at SDSU in an interior design class and she wanted them to research different theories or theories, um, say Montes, Montessori or Reggio or whatnot. And as you all know, and I've been really clear on this from the start, I am not a one-size-fits-all learner instructional theory. I, I don't believe that one size of any instruction, um, or one theory is best for all kids. But I, but I said, but I'll, I'll gladly work with you, but I'm not gonna just, I, I'm not your person if you want me to give updates and feedback on any one particular model of instruction or design. But I said, um, when, once we started working, what they did was they researched quite a few different leaders or instructional theories to find pieces. And my goal for them, my theme for them was they took our Hillcrest Elementary, the early childhood wing, because that's not fully developed yet. We knew it wouldn't be. That's something we wanted to get in, learn, play, teach, instruct in it and then. And so they, they took the actual floor models from that whole early, early childhood center and then they had to create spaces, they had to create designs that were able, that, and for me, what's important for me is that every child finds a place of quiet comfort for respite, for instructional security that they can find spaces to work in. So really, it was great because these, we work with, Chris, I would say, the instructional design folks that even we work with during construction, they don't understand neurodiversity in schools. You can see that in certain things all the time. And so I felt good about my time spent with the kids. I didn't teach them about, uh, old, you know, theorists, but I taught them that when you are employed and you go into a school design meeting, you can now speak about neurodiversity and creating spaces that are neurodiverse friendly. And so I spent about, oh, it's probably was about 10 to 12 hours total with them. They toured, I, and so I gave you a little snippet of one of the spaces that they, so I have all the designs. So now I've told my admin team and, and special education and early childhood folks, ooh, do I have ideas and ideas. And, you know, they're not experts now, but, um, they're gonna be able to talk better than some of the individuals we work with already. So, it was a great partnership. And then I just showed you, um, the individuals that I, uh, presented with last week in New Orleans. It was kind of a cool group. It was the superintendent from Norman, Oklahoma and the superintendent from more public schools in Oklahoma, um, along with, uh, Douglasville, Georgia. And so to be asked to be up on a, on a panel with those three was, was pretty cool, so. And then Liz McClemon, she is our admin office educational support professional of the year. So, that is all I have.
Dr. Schultz, you're, you're very humble, but to be on a panel at the national superintendent's conference, kudos to you. Uh, our district can be very proud that you're doing these innovative things and, um, that Brookings, South Dakota is, has their name in that, um, brochure and on that panel and so.
Thank you.
Very thankful to you for, uh, that leadership. All right. Any questions for Dr. Schultz? Okay, I, uh, I, Jason just clicked out of the meeting. Um, so let me get back in, I guess, right? I was trying to get out of, um, Summer's. Okay, so we'll get back in here. Thank you. All right, so we are at, that was her report, all the other reports, so we are up to... Okay, there we are. Thank you, Jason, sorry about that. Um, so then I can now go to, somehow I can jump to the, um... 8.23, notification of the review of policy JF, part-time enrollment? Wasn't many changes there?
No. And so again, just review that, it's only our notification at this time.
Going forwards. And then we have notification of, um, policy ECAC, video surveillance. We've never had one of these, um, before and it's something that, uh, we need to look into and get advice from, um, associated school boards and whatnot to, um, bring that into, bring that into a policy which we don't have.
Right. And so nothing was shared with you, but there will be something coming because we are getting some.
Yeah, that was just notification. And then we have, uh, the first reading of policy JGB, seclusion and restraint. Uh, we found that this policy sounds, sounds kind of harsh, but it's something that's, that's needed. And our policy needed some, uh, reevaluation and redoing and probably to put, um, some of what we had in policy more into a standard practice type book and not have it in policy. So please read through that one and, and make, yeah, it's a, it's a totally new, not new policy, but totally rewritten policy.
Yeah.
So, um, that would be important to take a look at. And then the last policy we have is the first reading to IKFA, early graduation. Uh, we had discussed at previous meetings about changing, uh, some of that and, um, also rewriting some of the forms. Wes?
Okay, on this policy on, um, early graduation, I would encourage, you know, I, I read it, uh, to, not to comment specifically, but, you know, to, uh, avoid making it, uh, putting impediments to early graduation. There are reasons, good reasons for people to graduate early, even after junior year. Uh, yes, credit hours will increase in, uh, 28 or whatever the year is out there, 22 and a half and then up to 24. And then, uh, you know, just note that, you know, family circumstances do change and so, uh, we need to have a relief valve for circumstances in which, uh, students need and almost, uh, you know, um, practice that they have a way out to graduate early and move on. We do have a number of students who, who are held back a year and maybe are already 19 in this year. I'm, I have, oh, I had connections with two individuals, uh, who, who are back as, uh, grade and then we get to be a senior, they're 19 and, uh, things have changed, you know, they matured much and then whatever else and they're just, so. Not with any particular recommendation, I just think careful not to create impediments and relief valves for situations that are, uh, legitimate reasons for individuals to graduate early. Realized 26 or credits is going to be a higher bar, but, you know, some students.
And that's a point well-taken, Wes, and it's something that we did discuss, that if there are extenuating circumstances where a family or a student needs to, um, meet the 22 credit, they meet the 22 credits, their situation is that they do need to, uh, graduate early, that, that is something, I, I believe we have discussed that there is that relief valve.
There was an opportu-, there would be an opportunity for them to meet with and request that. So they would meet with the administration and the counselors and request that they graduate early.
And then the board could approve that.
And then there could be a decision made. So that opportunity is there, Wes, for people to, um...
Would it take board, I'm, I'm trying to recall.
I don't think, I don't know if it was board approval.
It shouldn't really require a board approval.
I didn't see that. We had that in here.
Policy waiver like that?
Does the principal will approve or disapprove?
So there was a policy waiver. I think we discussed some about the, bringing it to the board or, um...
Just for graduation rate. We have to approve all students when they graduate. You know, we, at the end of the, that's what, so that's what it would be.
I go through and read them very carefully.
But they would, that's what it would be.
For their alphabetical order, I mean, I do all that, yeah, right.
They would have to bring it to us just so that we, it would be a matter of...
Believe me, I, uh, I'm sorry for you.
Putting our stamp on it, I guess, yeah.
So we'll read through that again with another, um... So we'll read through that again with another eye on it that takes in that perspective as well, and makes sure that we have that considered. So thank you, Wes. All right, that is all the policies. We are ready. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
And a second. Ready for that vote, Stacy? That motion carries. Then we move to our action items. Our first action item is I need a motion for the approval of donated items.
I approve approval of the donated items.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion and approval. Any questions? Just very generous from Brookings Utility for our esports, the Dayton Foundation for the theater, BHS Theater, and then Winks Fine Jewelry for our food for thought, which is very important for our food bills, yes.
What that is, is, yeah, the bills for school lunches that haven't, that were delinquent.
All right, Stacy, we're ready for the vote. That motion carries. Next agenda item, 11.2, is approval of the '23-'24 audit report. We need a motion, please.
I would ask that, and that we defer this to the next meeting, regular meeting, the April meeting. I, you know, we got it, we have it in our hands, I'd like to review it. One of the important responsibilities of the board is an audit function, and we need, and I don't have any issues, I don't expect there to be any issues, it's just simply as a matter of good practice, we should have the finance, our business manager, and if we decide to include a call audit team, we can do that. Did this a year ago, and I found it very helpful process. And so I would ask that we defer table this until the next meeting. So my motion would be to table this until the next regular meeting.
So we have a motion to table this till the April meeting. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Motion and a second. I think we've, Wes has given us his discussion. And so we'll take a vote to table this, please, Stacy. Motion passes. Next item is the approval of this supplement to the '24-'25 budget. I will move to approve that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Wes seconds it. Stacy, would you like to walk us through that at all, or does the board have questions?
Trying to put an explanation, like next to each one, so you know why, why the items are on there. A lot of it is just moving from one function to another, so, yeah, there's questions, I can certainly...
Anybody have any questions for Stacy?
I second it, by the way.
Okay, we're ready for the vote. And that motion passes. Next, we have 11.4, approval of the memorandum of understanding for the school counseling practicum between Brookings School District and Southern Oklahoma University. We have a motion for that, please.
I move approval of the memorandum.
I'll second that.
Second, any discussion or anything you want to fill us in on, Dr. Schultz?
Standard. Standard. Each one is a bit different, because it has, there isn't, say, a template we use for all of these. But if we have someone who is doing a practicum, student teaching within, in our school district, we always have that agreement, so that it works for us. But it also, you know, they know what we allow and what we don't allow, or, and we know what the expectations are for that individual. So this is just for this particular university, so that a staff member would be able to do that.
It's just a new request. I don't think we've had anything done.
Yes, this is new. And last week, or last month, was Dakota Wesleyan. So once we have them with the school, we don't, some of them do need annual approval, but like with Dakota Wesleyan last month, we just hadn't had one before, and so we just want one on file.
I did like the idea that they included their practicum handbook. I thought that's very beneficial for whoever supervises.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Stacy, we're ready for the vote. That motion passes. 11.5 on our agenda, approval of the changes to the 2025-2026 employee benefits planned as presented. I need a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? You mentioned this earlier with the, when we were on our policies.
I think the only, the members of the committee were supportive of the changes in the plan and of the increase in cost. They knew that was coming. The only thing that we discussed, and this kind of comes up every year, that we've had the insurance holidays, and that we have to be careful not, that employees do not count on that. And that was shared, that it kind of is getting to be like that, that they think in December we're going to have that insurance holiday, and we can't always guarantee that. It's great that we've been able to do that, and I would hope that we could in the future, but we just want to remind everyone that that's not always possible. But everything's spelled out in here pretty clearly, if you weren't at the meeting, is I think it's very clear on here what changes we're making in the policy.
Having read it, and not having taken notes like I should have, I was, as I recall, I was quite, obviously satisfied, but I did note that the increases are not that out of line. In fact, in some, couple cases, there is no increase, or it's very minimal.
And they had talked about they could have maybe gone a little lower, but then all of a sudden, you'll have a 15% increase in your insurance, and we don't want that to happen, it's better to have it incrementally. And they felt that this was very reasonable.
And it is the same company that we had used in the past. Any other comments or questions?
I would just point out, the 8% increase, still, we're not funding at 100%, we're in the 90s. And so, I mean, one of the recommendations was to increase 15%, then we'd be more funding it at 100%, but we're not spending 100% every year. It's been used wisely, so that's why we settled on the 8%. And I think we all felt comfortable with that, both the district and our broker as well. And it's not 8% on dental, it's 4% on dental. 8% is the health, 4% on dental.
All right, Stacy, we're ready for that vote, please. That motion passes. 11.6, approval of the memorandum of understanding between Brookings Area United Way in partnership with the Communities That Care Community Board and the Brookings School District. I would move approval of that. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Deb seconds that. Deb, do you have any more you want to add to that?
We just have several members of our staff, and our superintendent is the champion for this Communities That Care grant that was received by Brookings United Way. And really, I think it's an awesome partnership, because what we're doing is taking the data and using the data from our search survey, and looking at the issues of critical need in our community with our youth, and looking for ways that we can, as a community, work together with the programs that we might implement to help alleviate some of those issues that our young people are facing. And we have people from all over in the community, they're a part of this process. We have several from our school district, we have bankers, we have people from our nonprofit organizations, we have business people, we have the chamber people. So it's really a community effort, and that's what I think is the really positive aspect of this.
Any questions? Right, Stacy, we're ready for that vote. That motion passes. Now we have approval to adopt the 2024-2025 completed evaluation for Dr. Schultz. I will move approval of that.
I'll second that.
Deb seconded. This is obviously confidential, but it is part of the contract that we approved the evaluation in open session, and that was carried out through January and February. So we're ready for that. Ready for that vote, Stacy? That motion passes. And as part of that evaluation, thank you again, Dr. Schultz, for all that you have done in our district. Okay, 11.8, approval of the MOU between South Dakota Board of Regents and Brookings High School for the continuation of Math 114 in district court course offering. Do we have a motion for that, please?
I move approval of that.
Motion and second. Any comments or questions? It's what we've had in the past, and to continue on. Hey, Stacy, we're ready for the vote. Motion passes. Next item is approval to purchase for Brookings High School one-to-one laptops to ensure they may arrive and are set up for students by next fall. I will move approval of that.
I'll second that.
And Deb seconds it. Do you want to fill us in with any more on that, Stacy?
You know, there's a lot of unknown things with tariffs and such right now, and so we're hoping to kind of get ahead of that and not have delays in shipping. If they don't get those computers till, you know, if we don't order them till July 1st, when the new fiscal year starts, we aren't going to have them at all, let alone ready for the kids when they come. And the four-year lease for our high school students is up this year, so we have gone out to bid. Jason's been working on getting the three bids. Prices that we're seeing are, I'm going to say considerably lower than the last lease. Last lease, just for a round number, was about $1 million. We're hoping that it's going to be maybe $800,000 or less for over four years. So of course, we'll make the responsible decision with the quotes, which we hope to be able to make here in the next couple of days, but he would really like to get those ordered.
Okay, and thank you to Mr. Smith for getting that worked out. We're ready for that vote, Stacy. Motion passes. All right, we need a motion to move into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, subsection 4. And there would be no action items after this, so could I have a motion to move into Subsection 4, and a second, please.
Second.
And a second. We're ready for that vote, Stacy? That motion passes. So if anyone needs a little break, we can. Otherwise, thank you all for coming.